Good evening, we're going to get started. Good evening, my name is Molly McBride and I'm an administrative law judge with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I'll be presiding over this evening's public statement hearing regarding the application of Shimon County. The application is pending, proposing a lateral expansion of the Shimon County Municipal Solid Waste Landfill, which is located on County Route 60 in the town of Lomond. Pursuant to 6 NYCRR 621.8, the department published notice of this hearing in the department's environmental notice bulletin on October 28, 2015. Notice was also published in the leader on October 30, 2015. This public statement hearing is for members of the public to put their comments on the record for the department's consideration in the review of the application and the project. Please understand that this evening is not a question and answer session, but an opportunity for you to put your comments on the record for the department's consideration. If you do have any questions for department staff or for applicant and their staff, please raise them outside of this hearing here this evening. Contact information for the department personnel who are working on this matter is available at the table at the back of room where you came in, where you signed in. Anyone who would like to make a comment here today must fill out a speaker card. The comment cards are right in the back of the room, they are on the table. So far, we have about six cards, I think. We'll call your name when it is your turn to speak. Please come forward to the microphone here in the front and address your comments here to me. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me, I apologize. When you come to the microphone, please state your full name for the record. If you're representing a group, please identify who it is that you are representing. When you make your statement, please speak loudly, slowly, and clearly. I have a court reporter here this evening who is making a record of the proceedings. If you did not speak loudly, the court reporter may not get an accurate record of your comments here. I would please ask that everyone remain silent when a speaker is talking and that all speakers get the same courtesy and respect that you would want for yourself when speaking. If you do not wish to make an oral statement on the record here this evening, you may submit a written statement. You may have a handwritten or written statement here this evening. You may use the comment cards that we have behind the room. Or you may submit them to department staff. Comments must be submitted by December 4, 2015, to be considered. The email address for comments is available in the notice that's on the EMB website and department staff can also give it to you this evening. I'll read the email address now. If you would like to mail in your comments, please address them to Kimberly Merchant, who is the Deputy Regional Permit Administrator in the department's Region 8 office. Equal weight is given to oral and written comments. Before I begin calling members of the public to put their comments on the record, Kimberly Merchant will give a brief overview of the department's position on the project.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. My name is Kimberly Merchant. I'm with the Division of Environmental Permits in the NYSDC Region 8 Office in Adlon. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's hearing. I would like to introduce department staff that are here tonight to listen to your comments. Dudley Lowe, Scott Thode, Gary Mithlanka, Mark Domigala, Michelle Carrudi, Linda Vera, Thomas Papura, Rick Clarkson, and Robert Kahl. As Judge McBride mentioned, we are here to welcome your comments on the applications before the department, which include a modification of an existing solid waste management permit and a modification of an existing Air Title V permit. The draft Title V permit is available for your review. The department is not considering comments on the seeker record because the seeker process was concluded by Shimon County as lead agency. A final environmental impact statement was accepted in January 2015, and the county's findings were issued in February of 2015. The department will be required to issue our own finding statement prior to our decision on the application, however. The project is a proposal for a lateral expansion of the Shimon County Municipal Solid Waste Landfill facility, which accepts municipal and non-hazardous mixed waste, certain oil and gas exploration waste, commercial and industrial wastes, and other wastes. And I have a picture of the landfill for you to see here. The proposed project consists of the Cell 5 expansion, which involves the construction of approximately 44.5 acres of new liner system along the eastern boundary of the existing active landfill, existing Cells 2 and 3A. You can see those in the figure. Including 2.6 acres of overlay liner over the previously developed unlined landfill Area 5, and 8.2 acres of overlay liner over the active lined landfill, basically 33.7 acres of new lined landfill area, which is not currently landfill. Also, the proposed project includes the development of a new 18.9 acre soil borrow area, as well as the construction of a stormwater pond, leachate storage facilities, and access roads. The proposed rate of acceptance, which is currently an annual permitted tons limit of 180,000 tons per year, would be increased to 417,000 tons per year. The applicant is not proposing a modification to the types of waste that can be accepted at the facility. The application proposes that the facility's current operating hours of 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. be increased one hour from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The proposed project would extend the life of the landfill approximately 16.6 years or more, based on the proposed increased waste acceptance rate. The final height of the lateral expansion area would be 1,152 MSL, which is the same as the approved final height of the existing landfill. The DEC has prepared a draft Air Title V permit, including a renewal and modification of the current Title V permit to cover all air pollution processes at the Shimon County landfill associated with the existing landfill, the proposed landfill expansion, and the CND landfill. Existing permitted emission points at the landfill include eight candlestick flares, a 793 cubic foot per minute or CFM open flare, a 1,200 CFM open flare, which is not yet installed, and fugitive emissions from the landfill and the leachate collection pond and other miscellaneous sources. The proposed Title V permit is based on an increased potential to emit, which includes these existing sources, as well as the proposed new sources, including a new 2040 CFM enclosed flare, and fugitive emissions from the proposed additional expansion airspace, the expanded leachate pond, as well as other new miscellaneous sources. Although the landfill is not yet subject to the gas collection and control requirements of 40 CFR 60 subpart WWW, the landfill has installed an active gas collection system which sends gas to the flares. The facility remains a minor source pursuant to non-attainment new source review, with the exception of greenhouse gases, for which the facility will become a major source due to the expansion. As the judge mentioned, written comments will be considered equally with oral statements. Comments must be received by December 4, which is this Friday. The application documents are available at the applicant's website, which she read off. Or, I'm sorry, you didn't read that off. Okay, that is in the environmental notice bulletin, or I can give that to you tonight. The NYSDC Region 8 Office, the Shimon County Office Building, the Town of Shimon Office, and the Steel Memorial Library. Thank you for attending the hearing tonight, and I will turn this back over to Judge McBride.
Okay, our first speaker is Joe Flynn.
Thank you, Judge McBride, and I would like to make just a few comments. Excuse me, it's been a long drive. I drove over from Alfred, New York, where I am a professor emeritus at Alfred State College, having started teaching there in 1962. And my first interest, of course, in radioactive waste, basically, came from some of my students' compositions in the early '60s. They happened to be from farmland in West Valley. And at that point, of course, the storage facilities run by GEDV were leaking into their grandparents' farms. And we went from that, of course, to some protest and organizing in Alfred when the state of New York wanted to site nuclear waste dumps in Allegheny County. Five of the areas were not too far from Alfred. And so, at that point, I was acting dean of the School of Liberal Studies, and we conducted quite a few scientific forums on this issue, including the testimony of Marvin Resnikov, who, not too long ago, in 2012, testified about the particulars of drill-cutting waste and especially the effects of radium-226. And that is part of the record. I realize the complicated nature that you are dealing with. It has many scientific components. If you were watching or reading the New York Times this past week, you saw the major report on decommissioning of nuclear plants in the United States and the potential for the tremendous amount of nuclear waste that we have in this country. We do not have a site in this country for nuclear waste. But that raises the question first about the transportation of potential nuclear waste from Pennsylvania to the site here. We're very familiar in Allegheny County with the Highland landfill and the problems associated with that in Angelica, New York. And the leachate and the leachate fields that you have, of course, has been drained from the cuttings in the process, and the liquid has been taken to the water purification plant in Wellsville, New York, which then exits after that plant into the river, which, of course, as you know, the river's not part of the state, from both north and south, up into the Great Lakes and down into the Chesapeake Bay. So I would say that what you're engaged in is a very, very problematic scientific undertaking. We know, for example, that the half-life of radium-226 is thousands and thousands of years. That is, it is potentially dangerous. The final point that I will make is, yes, we have a law in New York State, or at least a government's, a governor's statement, that New York State will ban or has banned hydrofracking and its consequences. However, what I find personally very ironic and troubling is that whereas New York State has gone on the record as being opposed to hydrofracking and its consequences, we are taking the materials, the byproducts of that, from Pennsylvania, a state that has outlawed storing these materials in the state of Pennsylvania, and transporting them both up here to Shimon County and, of course, to Allegheny County in both landfills. I do understand the difficulties that you face in coming to these decisions. The last time I was over here, or close to here, I shouldn't say, Marvin Resnikov once again came and testified in this area. And prior to that, it was on the pay-per-post, looking at the tank cars that are taking fresh water at the rate of 1 million gallons a day from the aquifers that are common. One of, there are 14 great aquifers here in New York State, and the aquifer you're talking about is the same, it's my understanding, aquifer that supplies the water for Almyra and is a vital source of fresh water for all the people in this area. I thank you very much for the opportunity to address you, and I will be submitting a written statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl Robinson.
I'm Earl Robinson. I'm a physician, and I live a half a mile from the Shimon County landfill. And I'm a member of residents for the preservation of Lomond and Shimon. And we've been watching this project for the last 10-plus years, I guess. Just a little background, you may know everything about this, but I'm just going to give a little background. So, the Shimon County landfill, which was the Shimon County dump at one time, was cited without the authorization of the DEC. It was a gravel pit. And once they took the gravel out, they started dumping things in there. There were no liners, and there were no restrictions. In the 1980s, a lot of the landfills in New York State were closed because they were in the wrong place and had the wrong things in them. This particular landfill, because it had no authorization of the DEC before DEC even existed, took in all kinds of things. And a lot of that stuff is in the records of the DEC in Avon, showing pictures of 50-gallon tromes of hazardous waste, batteries, all kinds of stuff. And the landfill had been cited for having unauthorized CND areas, which had to be closed because they had no permits for them. It's been cited for taking in lead waste, and the state's attorney general's office was involved when this was turned over to Casala, and were being investigated for civil and criminal penalties for dumping lead. At any rate, the landfill is over the aquifer to the west, that's pretty well-known. And the most recent study that we could, this is a very interesting study. Okay, you put a landfill in a gravel pit with no siding, and then it's the only place on the north side of the Shimon River where there is an aquifer. Pretty lucky. So up until now, there's really been no major study of the aquifers in that area. There have been some anecdotal stuff, and then they did a study in 1986, they were going to close the dump if it showed that this was on the aquifer. So they did a study, which nobody can find anymore. It disappeared from the records. Now, we found in October of this year, somebody did do a study, and I put that record over there. I'll give you a copy of this. U.S. Geological Survey, it's pretty obvious that, according to this study, which is October 2015, that it is on the aquifer, and that the proposed expansion site is also on the Now, since the proposal, last time I heard about the proposal, there have been some changes, and one of them has been elimination of the gas-to-energy generator. And I'm thinking this is probably because of the volume of gas that's coming out of the various areas in the dump, some of which are captured and some of which are not captured, which probably would violate Title V permit. But I haven't really had a chance to get into it. That's pretty technical stuff. So we are hiring a hydrogeologist and a landfill engineer, and we are going to have our radiation person come back, Dr. Resnikov, and look at this stuff. You will receive a preliminary survey of the information by your deadline. We'd like to extend that for two weeks so you can get a full study done. I know that we've had the opportunity for a while to do this, but in our particular group, we've had two members hospitalized. We don't have a big group. And one's now deceased with metastatic cancer, and the other one's incapacitated, and we've been trying to take care of them. The other thing is, is, of course, this meeting comes between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which is a very difficult time for most people to attend meetings. Actually, most meetings are canceled during that period of time. Yeah, two weeks shouldn't really be a big problem, since the majority of the waste from Shimon County goes someplace else anyway. We've also been involved, in my particular group, with preservation efforts. Now, whether you know it or not, the Newtown Battlefield is a national landmark, and the edge of that is within three-quarters of a mile from the landfill. In September of 2015, the National Battlefield Protection Agency met with a lot of the landowners, including myself, describing a preservation plan. Recently, the Congress has enacted legislation which would allow for the purchase of development rights from people who want to preserve national battlefields. The Newtown Battlefield is felt to be within the top five of importance and ability to preserve battlefields in the United States between the Revolutionary War and the Battle of 1812 War. On my property, there was a marker for the Battle of Shimon, August 1779, where 16th Revolutionary War soldiers were killed or wounded in an ambush. And there was a marker there. We recently had the archaeologists from Binghamton come and find the actual battle site with the bullets and that sort of thing. So we're trying to get that on the National Register, too. At almost the entrance of the landfill, there is a marker for that battle with the flags, which were put up by the state of New York, British, a Seneca, and an American flag. In November, this last month, a couple weeks ago, we had a group of Seneca and Delaware Native Americans taken on a tour by the Binghamton archaeologists, showing them the battlefields and the areas where previous village sites were. And we're waiting to see what their response is, because they're also interested in preservation. I left a copy of some leachate samples. We don't have the most recent one, but from previous investigations, which showed that initially there was a high level of radium leachate samples, but they did have some dumpage there of other than drill cuttings. So I live a half a mile from the landfill, been there for 36 years. Never could see it, smell it, or hear it until Casala took over the landfill. Then, there's been a geometric increase in tons and elevation to the landfill. Now, I can see a tower of brown, which looks as high as the surrounding mountains. When I go out to my barn, there's about two dozen turkey vultures waiting for me, waiting to, after the morning sun dries out their wings, go over the landfill. Now, turkey vultures don't defecate, they vomit the residual from their stomachs, so it's a little bit nasty. My house, and 160 acres, is on the National Register for historic places. This is supposed to give your property a little bit of protection against visual and other detrimental actions, but obviously, that's not happening in this case. There's a lot of other things that go on with this whole thing, which are in the records. I bring up these other points because these aren't unusual things that people talk about, but they're personal, and they affect the environment and the neighborhood and the people that I take care of. I'm a critical care pulmonary physician, so I usually see people in the last stages of their life. And what I try to do with my patients is to prevent that. Now, if I have a consultation for a patient who needs surgery, I try to make sure that I've covered every possible complication before that patient goes into surgery, so we don't have a whoops episode. And in this particular case, there's a lot going on here, and I certainly don't want somebody to make a mistake and have one of those things happen. So, thank you very much.
Rachel Triekler. My name is Rachel Triekler. I'm an attorney in Hammond's Ford in Steben County, and I'm speaking tonight as a concerned resident of New York State. I urge DEC to deny Casala's request to double the size of the Shimon County landfill. The Shimon County landfill already accepts more solid gas drilling waste from Pennsylvania than any other landfill in New York. DEC needs to take a major step back from its practice of allowing this landfill and other municipal solid waste landfills in New York to continue to accept shale gas drilling waste without adequate testing and monitoring of radioactivity. Allowing radioactive drilling waste to be deposited in municipal solid waste landfills violates the prohibitions and requirements of New York's low-level radioactive waste laws and regulations. And I think Mr. Flynn, Professor Flynn, has described to you the circumstances in Allegheny County with a proposal to have radioactive waste out there in Allegheny County, and it's my understanding that that was some of the background that led New York to adopt those laws and regulations. We have a good law and regulation regarding low-level radioactive waste and how it must be handled, but that's not being applied by DEC to the shale gas drilling waste, even though Article Appendix 13 of DEC's revised draft S guise on hydraulic fracturing shows that extremely high levels of gross alpha and beta were present in produced brine from vertical Marcellus wells drilled in this region of New York State. Such levels of radioactivity mandate proper handling and tracking of these wastes. DEC's treatment of radioactivity risks in the revised S guise has been criticized by Ivan White, who's a staff scientist for the National Council on Radiation Protection, as he said about DEC that they display a cavalier attitude toward human exposure to radioactive material. And he also stated that the superficial characterization in the S guise of radioactive risks has prompted warnings from the EPA, whose public comments on the S guise reflect deep concern about DEC's understanding and appreciation of the actual risks posed by radiation. Now, we're all very grateful that the DEC decided, again, as Professor Flynn noted, that you decided that the risks of hydraulic fracturing are too great to allow this in New York, the human health impacts. But those same risks are present when we take waste from Pennsylvania. And again, the Shimon landfill is taking more solid waste from Pennsylvania, solid gas drilling waste than any other landfill in the state. And now, we have a proposal to more than double the size of the landfill, and Casala has stated that the purpose of this is to allow more gas drilling waste to be taken into the landfill. The final EIS for the Shimon landfill expansion states that the gamma detectors at the entrance to the landfill will mitigate any potential significant adverse environmental to the landfill will mitigate any potential significant adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable. But this overlooks the problems that exist with the gamma detectors that they're using. The difficulties of measuring gamma radiation from radium in waste samples are well-known. An earthworks report on issues with state regulation of different aspects of oil and gas drilling waste that was published in April this year. That study notes that gamma radiation is used to measure radium-226 and radium-228 in waste samples, but it can take twenty-one days in the laboratory for gamma to emerge. As a result, if waste samples are not correctly analyzed, radiation concentrations in both waste and landfill leachate, and in turn, the potential risks posed to health and the environment may be underestimated. And here, we have a situation where they're just driving trucks through the gamma detector. They're certainly not waiting twenty-one days for gamma to emerge from radium-226 and 228. And it may be, I understand that DEC has asked the landfill to do some tests with driving the trucks through. We would like more information on whether those tests have been conducted and how those tests are conducted, because if the radium is buried in the center of the load, you know, how is it being detected? So there are many issues with the gamma detectors that the landfill is using. And so, the reason why we understand that DEC is not applying the low-level radioactive waste laws is because they have determined that they will classify gas drilling waste as naturally occurring radioactive material. And then, on that basis, they are claiming it is exempt. However, gas drilling wastes are not naturally occurring. There's a whole drilling process, they've gone through an entire drilling process, hydrofracturing, they've been ground up and brought to the surface, and then they are processed and concentrated at the surface as well. So it is not appropriate to categorize gas drilling waste as naturally occurring. It is not appropriate to exempt those wastes from the low-level radioactive waste laws. And if they were appropriately made subject to those laws, then every load has to be tested, there has to be tracking of the loads, and those wastes cannot be disposed of in New York, because we don't have any low-level radioactive waste landfills in New York. So for all these reasons, we urge DEC to look at the risks, to give an in-depth look at the radioactive hazard that are presented by gas drilling waste, and to ban radioactive gas drilling waste from New York landfills. Thank you.
Susan Multer.
Good evening. I lived in Horseheads, which is in Chamon County, until two years ago. Although I have a Master's of Science from Columbia, I'm not going to tackle any scientific or technological or engineering topics tonight, because there are experts here in the room who are doing that. I'd like to mention two sources of information that you representatives from the DEC may not know about, that might interest you. In January of 2014, in this room, we had a public hearing about the Chamon County landfill expansion request. And after the hearing, there were a couple of weeks' time before people could send in written comments, and I would like to concur with other speakers that to only have two days between now and the deadline for written comments is quite unusual, in my experience from any public hearing I've attended. But anyway, after that public hearing, I came back to the county three times to sit in the county clerk's office and read all the letters that were sent by the public. There were over three hundred. Quite a number of them were form letters through the Sierra Club, and some of them were from people who didn't live in this area. But my reason for bringing this up tonight is I hope all of you folks from the Department of Environmental Conservation will ask Chamon County for those three hundred letters or copies of them, so that you can read the ones that are not form letters and that have very articulate, informed, reasoned arguments about why continuation of having drill cuttings because of the radioactivity and the heavy waste, why it gets dangerous for Chamon County and the area. So I respectfully request that you ask for those from the county clerk here in Chamon Another source of information is a three-part series that just came out in our local paper, and you all probably don't receive that. You can see the headlines even this far away. "The Promise of Fracking," that was the headline of the first article, saying what people were told years ago about the benefits of hydraulic fracturing of shale. I know we're not here to talk about fracking tonight, but I'm using this as an example of the fact that when companies or corporations would benefit from a project or a process, obviously, they favor it. Even when county executives and county legislatures, like here in Chamon, will benefit from something, they're likely to favor it. So it's very hard to get an objective presentation of facts in those circumstances, no matter what the topic is. Sometimes, facts are left out. Sometimes, things are changed or not reported, and sometimes, the truth is not told. I don't expect you to believe that from me, but this three-part series goes into the question of, has there ever been water contamination from fracking? And the industry has said over and over and over again, no, no, that doesn't happen. And now, we have the proof, years later, what's happened in Pennsylvania. And this is just an example of whom do we believe? The people who benefit from something and may have a conflict of interest, or the other side? And back in 2014, the League of Women Voters here locally held a forum with, whose speakers included a vice president from Casella and an attorney, Gary Abrams, and they each presented with a fancy PowerPoint their position. And the bottom line was, Casella said, having drill cuttings in the Chamon County landfill is safe, and the attorney said it wasn't. Whom do we believe and how do we decide? I think these three articles about fracking are so important that I've made fifteen copies, I had no idea how many of you would be here tonight, with the links, so you can get them online, if you're prepared to read any or all of them, and see what we have learned years after hearing that fracking would be safe, when in fact, it isn't. So I tie this in with tonight's topic, that the drill cuttings that are already going into the Chamon County landfill, and which there will be many more of if this expansion is approved, are dangerous for not only the environment, but our health. And my last point is simply that when there is air or water pollution or contamination, it doesn't stop at county lines. You know, the leachate, whatever's coming out of the leachate, and I have read that there are increased amounts of not healthful products, and whatever goes into the air, and I know tonight's focus is air, goes wherever the wind blows. And so, my last thought to leave with you is, we all live downwind.
Jason Knapp.
My name is Jason Knapp. I live at 1826 County Route 60 in La Man. I'm speaking tonight for myself and for the residents of Preservation along in Chamon. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation was created on July 1st in 1970 to combine a single agency, to combine a single agency, all state programs designed to protect and enhance the environment. Their mission statement is to conserve, improve, and protect New York's natural resources and environment, and to prevent, abate, control, and control water, land, and air pollution in order to enhance the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the state and their overall economic and social well-being. DEC's goal is to achieve this mission through the simultaneous pursuits of environmental quality, public health, economic prosperity, and social well-being, including environmental justice and the empowerment of individuals to participate in environmental decisions that affect their lives. As you listen to speakers tonight and read what has been written and spoken of in the past, please keep these thoughts in mind about the DEC and its mission statement. The DEC is being asked to approve the doubling of the size of the Chamon County landfill. This is a landfill that has unlined or poorly lined cells at the bottom, sits on gravel that has gravel, groundwater flowing under it and into the Chamon River, a quarter of a mile away, which supplies drinking water to hundreds of thousands of people downstream. A landfill that will accept hundreds of thousands of tons of garbage from downstate and outstate, that accepts hundreds of thousands of tons of Pennsylvania drilling waste, that has higher-than-background radiation levels, that has runoff water with levels, levels with increasing levels of radiation, that produces large amounts of methane at a time when the world is trying to combat climate change by reducing methane levels. A landfill that will increase noise pollution, increase truck traffic, and its associated noise and air pollution, and increase odor. A landfill that makes lots of money for Casella, but could hurt Chamon County residents down the road when they are faced with pain to clean up this mess. A landfill that should not be expanding, but downsizing instead, if Casella were to do its job of promoting composting, recycling, and zero waste, and if the county were doing its job of promoting mandatory recycling. So, DEC, please, think about your mission statement and the issues I have raised along the issues of many others when you make your decision. Thank you.
Erin Rinnell.
Good evening. My name is Erin Rinnell. I live in Tioga County, and I work here in Chamon County. And I'm also speaking as a concerned resident of the state of New York. I'm here to urge the DEC to deny the expansion project of the landfill here in Chamon County. And I like to frame my comments in sort of a historical reflection of the purpose of a landfill, where it used to be that families would have their own personal dump in their backyard and dispose of their waste personally on their own property. So eventually, it was determined that this was dangerous to property owners and neighboring communities. So landfills were developed to deal with that waste and manage that waste in a way that's supposed to be responsible and reduce the impact on the community that it was held in. So thinking about the landfill as a service to the people of the community, especially the county in this case, and contrasting that with the agenda or the purpose of the private corporation, which is to earn a profit, which is, you know, not a comment about their agenda, but that's just what their motivation is, to necessarily earn a profit. So within that context, thinking about that conflict that necessarily inherently exists between the service to the people of the county and the motivation to earn the profit within the private corporation. It's not, it's not clear that this is motivated by the service to the people of the county. It's probably motivated in terms of the profit for the corporation. So I live in Tioga, I'm in Tioga County, and I drive to here, to Alera, every day. When I'm on the road, I see a lot of natural gas infrastructure on the road. So that includes water being hauled from parts of New York State down to Pennsylvania. That includes waste that's coming up from Pennsylvania being delivered to the landfill here. And we're very grateful that the DEC has denied natural gas extraction here in New York State. But even though that process is denied, we're still dealing with the infrastructure, the waste, the removal of our water resources that is benefiting on other state or the corporations that are engaging in these processes in other state. So, thinking about what's going on here in terms of that and that context, and also thinking about previous examples that we can look at. So there's already been the example of looking at the waste disposal in West Valley, looking at other landfills that are taking drill cuttings and waste from natural gas extraction. We are assuming a tremendous burden that is benefiting corporations that are operating in another state. And that burden is immediate in terms of filling the landfill up. Even though it's being expanded, it's also filling it up at the same time, which is also benefiting not the people of the county of Chamon, but Casella. Not only that, there's an additional burden down the road where we're not really entirely clear about the health consequences for us as individuals, for our natural resources. And that burden is likely to be determined still in the future. So the burden is on the people of Chamon in terms of the financial impact, in terms of the health impact, so that a private corporation can make a profit, so that private corporations in Pennsylvania can make a profit. So I think that the people of New York State, especially people who are concerned about the impact of industrial natural gas extraction, are looking at these proceedings very carefully to think about, does the DEC, you know, given the decision that happened with hydraulic fracturing, is the DEC really committed to protecting the natural resources and the people of New York State, and in particular, the people of Chamon County? Thank you.
Mary Thorpe.
Good evening. Many of us have had a chance to stand in this room and speak before our county legislators, and I'm glad to have a chance to speak to the DEC tonight. Thank you for taking our testimony. The DEC, it's out drilling waste from the low-level radioactive waste laws, not because they're not radioactive, but because they're naturally occurring. And I would take some dispute with that. We understand that many things that are naturally occurring are still hazards. And one thing that came to my mind immediately was asbestos. I learned from... I learned from an EPA document that all New York State landfills can't take asbestos waste. And I don't know if the Shimon County landfill does, but I found that very disturbing. It's another matter, but I think they're all related. I've stood at the base of the landfill, Melton, and seen dust blowing up off of it into the surrounding neighborhood. And we're concerned because there's a cluster of cancer cases in that neighborhood. Nobody here has spoken of that tonight, although I just heard of another case, a new case in the neighborhood that somebody passed away from cancer. As I recall, there were nine people who died of cancer along that stretch of road. So I think that actually should warrant an investigation. And the radioactive material does occur naturally, but 2,000 feet below the ground. And it's not natural when it is brought to the surface and mixed with chemicals and processed. That's another matter altogether. And down Rachel, Trifor, talking about the detectors that are not a sensitive way to measure the waste. That's a concern also. And I'd just like to mention, I worked in a laboratory with radioactive tracers. And we had to account for every people caring of radioactivity that came in and that was disposed of in that lab. And it just boggles my mind. You're dealing with tons of radioactive material in a very complicated manner. And so I would just like to implore that this waste should be subject to the low-level radioactive waste laws and not be deposited into a county. Thank you.
Paula Cartman.
Paula Cartman from Tioga County. I just wanted to say that Susan Multer mentioned that there were 300 comments last year. I was one of the people who came to most of the meetings all year, so a couple of times. And so my comments are based on what I heard then, and I think it would be good if you, as she suggested, read those comments. I spent a lot of time in Shimon County. That's one of the reasons I'm here. Very concerned about, very concerned about what's proposed for the landfill. My job is in education in a school that includes parts of both counties, Tioga and Shimon. And I see that people are being extremely stressed emotionally and physically by worrying about the safety of their environments. More and more students are going into environmental studies. Unfortunately, other people are in denial or lack information. For example, my neighbor, a retired science teacher at the College, was pro-fracking because he needed money to pay his taxes. When I mentioned to him last year that I was coming here to a Shimon County legislative meeting because the landfill was accepting radioactive waste from Pennsylvania, he said, "They allowed that?" He was shocked. I know that it's not just the people who came here to speak or to support us who are troubled by what seems to be a total disregard for people's health and the integrity of our environment, especially water waste and air quality. It's hard to believe it's come to this where corporations like Casella Waste Management can get permission to do anything they want by somehow securing the support of local government. Casella found a customer that refused to deal with its own toxic waste and wanted to ship it out of Pennsylvania. Shimon County and other counties in New York State were willing to accept the waste without public approval. Virtually everybody who spoke last year at these legislative meetings was against the landfill expansion. I think we now, we are seeing a form of ecological terrorism in the United States and in New York against the people. Companies know their practices are bad for people in the area, but they lie about their knowledge. And this is based on some testimony I heard last year. They fudge it and they cover it up. There was a time when corporations were held accountable for unsafe practices. Charters would be revoked from business for not working for the public good. In what way is Casella working for the public good except by bringing in some revenue to a county that lacks the leadership to support economic enterprise that could last for generations, which accepting fracking waste will not do? Regarding the landfill, I'm concerned that not only radioactive materials for chemicals used in fracking are being brought to landfill from spill waste, which is allowed. And with multiple fracs allowed at drilling sites, I wonder how drill cuttings could be isolated. Can we trust Casella to be honest about what's being hauled to Melton? As mentioned, there's a cancer cluster in Melton near the landfill, according to people who live there. I heard that there were nine households affected. Many fracking chemicals cause cancer. I'm concerned that their aquifers chloral under the proposed expansion that will receive contaminated waste that will go into the Shimon River eventually. Even treated water doesn't lose its radioactivity. The county spends a lot of money touting the recreational opportunities on the Shimon River. Yet scientists say the fish, for one thing, will accumulate radioactivity and be unsafe to eat. So I'm asking the DEC to not grant the permits for the Shimon County landfill expansion. Thank you.
Candace Miggins.
My name is Candace Miggins. I live in Veneton, which is in Shimon County. And I'm here to ask the DEC to deny the expansion of the Shimon County landfill. I applaud the DEC for the time and the careful consideration it took to study whether hydraulic, high-volume hydraulic fracturing was safe for New York. And with the careful consideration of the time that you gave it, you decided that it was not. I think the acceptance of Marcellus waste from Pennsylvania is a larger state issue than just the expansion of Shimon County. And it should be given the careful attention that high-volume hydraulic fracturing was given. There's many issues, but it needs to have more comprehensive study. And it needs to look carefully at the loophole that exists, that I consider not seeing the Marcellus waste and the drill cuttings as low-level radioactive waste. That is an oil and gas industry loophole, as far as I'm concerned. It needs to be looked at carefully, and you need to give it the time. So denying this expansion will give you that time to really look at the issue and keep New Yorkers safe. Thank you.
That was my last speaker card that we have. On behalf of the DEC, I want to thank you all for coming out this evening. Have a safe trip home.